On International Day for Disaster Risk Reduction. My name is Julian Kutsia. I currently live in the United Arab Emirates, in Abu Dhabi specifically. We would just really like to welcome everybody from our global society. And thank you for taking the time to attend the special session. As with all special sessions, there are a few ground rules. Involved, a few observances. That we're just like everybody to adhere to at the end of the day. Please at all times remember that this session is being live recorded. Secondly, please keep your microphones muted at all times and your cameras off. Unless you'd like to appear in the recording, we will have specific stages. During the session where we will ask for a group photograph for memory purposes more than anything else. And yes, we'd just like you to remain professional and please, if there are any questions, anything along those lines, please feel free to post your questions in the chat bar below. Or there are also question answer sessions available for each session. Thank you very much for joining us. It's an absolute pleasure to have everybody here. And with that, I'd like you to pass everybody across to Dr. Hideyuki, who will be taking over the session from here. Thank you very much, everybody. Really appreciate it. Dr. Hideyuki, are you with us?
Yes, okay, thank you very much, Julian. Right. So yeah, thank you very much for your participation today. So my name is Hideyuki Shiroshita. I am Associate Professor at Kansai University. I'm also, you know, founding president of this ADN with Nibedita Ray Bennett. So yeah, it is our great pleasure to host this special session today. Japanese physicist Torahiko Terada, maybe some of you knows his name. Once says that disaster come just when we have forgotten about them. So this phrase has many meanings, but one of which is that disaster occur at long intervals. So in this right, the International Day for Disaster Risk Reduction is very important so that we don't do not forget about disaster. So the October 13th is very important today for not only experts, but also all of people in the world. So I'm very glad that we can celebrate this international day today with distinguished two speakers and then participant. So yes, next please. Yes, this is time to.
I can't hear.
I think Hideyuki is frozen.
Frozen.
I don't know.
Yeah, Hideyuki, are you back? Yes, Hideyuki, you got disconnected in your previous slide. Sorry, if you could. Thank.
Oh, sorry, I didn't come back. Yeah, yeah, so sorry. Yeah, the connection is not good today. Sorry. Yes, yeah, so thank you very much for, you know, two speakers. Yes, Mr. Professor Michael Peterson and Sheikh Qayyir Rahman. I'm sorry, my connection is not good today. Yeah, and then I would also like to thank all of you who are here today from different parts of the world. And finally, I would like to thank everyone at ADN who has worked so hard to make this special session possible. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so over to you, Nibedita.
Thank you. Thank you, Hideyuki. Thank you, Julian. We're going to have quite a few new members today who will be speaking at this special session. So welcome to the special session once again. My name is Nibedita Ray Bennett. I'm an Associate Professor in Risk Management based at the University of Leicester School of Business. Dr. Hideyuki Shiroshita and I founded Avoidable Deaths Network. I'm repeating it again. Hideyuki has already done that. So I would like to thank the audience for joining with us, for joining on this very special day, the International Day for DRR. Now, you know, the people, the DRR community around the world is celebrating. Now, I think just in the spirit of what Hideyuki said, I think ADN is a disaster by design. So we think lives sleep through the idea of disasters. It's not just, I know today we are celebrating it to mark the day of the United Nations DRR, but otherwise ADN is organizing special sessions throughout the year to keep this this concept, you know, and the practice of disaster reduction live. So once again, I would like to thank the audience for spending time with us and also our very special guests and an expert panel. Professor Michael Peterson and Dr. Mr. Qayyir Sheikh. Now, the today's special session is based on the theme Early Warning and Early Action for All, which is target G of the Sendai Framework. And early warning is an essential part of saving lives and reducing the economic and material impact of hazardous events, including disasters. Early warnings and early alerts are essential for activating disaster response systems. For instance, prior to the Indian Ocean tsunami in 2004, there was no early warning system in place to monitor the Indian Ocean water surface. As such, there was no core information for the disaster responders to rely on. The consequence of this was a death toll of more than 250,000 people, 225,000 people. And in the words of Kofi Annan, in 2006, I explained, and I quote, "If an early warning system had been in place when the tsunamis of 26th December 2004 struck the Indian Ocean region, many thousands of lives could have been saved." That catastrophe was a wake-up call for governments and many others about the role early warning can play in avoiding and reducing the human and physical impact of natural hazards. Early warning systems provide information ahead of hazardous events to enable preemptive action to reduce the risks faced by exposed people. Now, I shan't go much into detail because our expert panel, Professor Michael Peterson and Sheikh Qayyir Rahman will provide their insights and their experience in saving lives through early warning and early action. But before I invite our expert panel to give us a talk, let me just introduce Avoidable Deaths Network briefly. So Lauren, if we could go to the next slide, please. Yes, so the Avoidable Deaths Network is a diverse, dynamic, inclusive, and innovative global membership network of experts, practitioners, and researchers interested in avoiding human deaths from natural hazards, naturally triggered technological hazards, and human-made hazards in low and middle income countries. ADN was launched in 2019 at the fourth summit of the Global Alliance for Disaster Risk Institutes in Kyoto University in Japan. Like this. So we are misunderstood often as an NGO. ADN is not an NGO. ADN is based and led by the University of Leicester, where I am based, and Kansai University in Japan. Now, this is a joint enterprise and implemented in collaboration with our 21 regional coordinators that are spread across the across the four continents. Leicester University offers MSc in Risk, Crisis, and Disaster Management. It's a flexible learning course, and I am the program director. Kansai University offers a suite of BA and BSc in Safety Sciences. So to learn more about these programs, please feel free to visit our website. And if you want, you can also email us. We can move to the next one. So what is the purpose of Avoidable Deaths Network? So the purpose of Avoidable Deaths Network is to help policymakers, researchers, and practitioners make a better decisions to save lives and reduce injuries. So that, so that we can help towards achieving the Sustainable Development Goal. Our purpose is aligned with the United Nations Sendai Framework for Disaster Risk Reductions. First two global targets, A and B. And the first target is about substantially reducing global disaster mortality by 2030. And the second target, which is target B, is about substantially reducing the number of people affected by disasters globally by 2030. Now, both targets, A and B, are very much connected with the early warning systems. Now, our vision is that by 2030, we would like to be recognized as global leaders on avoidable deaths for impactful research, solution, and services. And we are very pleased to let you know that ADN was been selected by the United Nations Office for Disaster Residuations Tokyo Office to display our activities on the Sendai Framework Voluntary Commitments Platform, not least till 2030, and we provide updates to the United Nations Disaster Residuations Office every six months. So we can move to the next one. Okay, so I've already spoken about that, but yes, just to summarize that this targets A and B work in the interface with three Sustainable Development Goals, 11, 13, and 17. So you could see some of the logos of the voluntary commitments platform. And we have a website, sorry, we have a webpage there on the platform, and you can stay up to date with our activities either by visiting ADN's webpage, website, or UN DRR's website. So we can move to the next one. So to achieve our vision and the target that we have set, so we are currently doing six interrelated activities. Now, given the constraint of time, I shan't go through the details of these activities. Now, the first two activities are particularly relevant to our special sessions. So we can move to the next one. So we launched the first special session on avoidable deaths on 4th December 2020 at the Gorilla Conference in Makarrari University in Uganda. Now, today's special session is the 12th special session. We can move to the next one, and the aim of the special sessions are twofold. Sorry, we can keep it to the previous slide. So the aim of the special sessions are twofold. The first, they are knowledge exchange and engagement webinars delivered virtually to the public for free with the aim to raise awareness on the concept of avoidable deaths and their avoidance through theoretical or practical solutions or tools. And the second, the aim of the special session is to raise awareness on those deaths that are often not on the mainstream agenda of the policymakers, practitioners, and even academia. For instance, our previous sessions have raised awareness on deaths from nutritional crisis, from dog bites, snake bites, scavenging, and also from drowning deaths. So with that note, I'm going to close my introduction speech about ADN, so we can move to the next slide. So if you would like to join Avoidable Deaths Network, please feel free to join through the link that is right at the bottom, but my colleague, one of my colleagues will drop the link on the chat box. And you can follow ADN through Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn. And yeah, and as I said, if you would like to stay up to date with ADN's activities, you could either visit our website or also stay up to date through the UN DRR Sendai Voluntary Commitment platform exclusively dedicated for Avoidable Deaths Networks. So with that note, I'm going to stop. And then I will invite Professor Michael Peterson, but before I do, can we have a photo shoot, please? So Lauren, over to you. Thank you very much for listening. And once again, thank you to the audience for joining. And I'm sure we will have a brilliant time and brilliant opportunity to learn by listening to these two experts from practice as well as from academia. So let us have a quick photo shoot. So Lauren, thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I'll just give another minute in case people are trying to turn on their cameras. Okay, I'm just gonna start taking photos, so I'll try and get good ones. Okay, I have three. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. So here we are, our first speaker, Professor Michael Peterson. It's an absolute honor to introduce and welcome Professor Peterson, partly because Professor Michael Peterson has been my mentor for the past 10 years, and there's another mentor on the on the screen today with us, Professor Norio Kada from Japan. And Professor Norio Kada has been our mentor for both Hideyuki and myself. But Professor Michael Peterson is just my mentor, and I've known him for the past 10 years. And also Professor Michael Peterson is ADN's advisor. So Professor Mike Peterson is a geoscientist. Currently, he's based at Auckland University of Technology in New Zealand. He has previously held professorial and senior leadership positions at the British Geological Survey in the UK, Leicester University, Secretariat of the Pacific Community, and the University of South Pacific in Fiji. Much of Professor Mike Peterson's career has been involved with international development, particularly in areas such as institutional strengthening, capacity building, training and education, and technical geoscience. He has worked in South and Central Asia, the Pacific Islands, the Caribbean, and South America, and has provided firm foundations for the actual of knowledge in interconnected science, interconnected geoscience, but particularly focusing on how geoscience alongside other disciplines with appropriate worldviews can add the greatest value to development-related interventions. So Professor Mike Peterson, it's an absolute honor to have you today. The floor is yours, and please give us your talk. Thank you, and over to you.
Thank you so much for that. Can everybody hear me? By the way, is that okay? You can hear me? Yes. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Nibedita, for that wonderful introduction. It's very kind of you, and it's a great honor to speak to ADN here today on this very important subject. So for the next 15 minutes or so, I'll be telling you about, I'll be discussing early warning systems from the point of view partly as a scientist, but also partly is using these systems in the real world in the field. And this is a picture actually of a natural early warning system. Here, this is a volcano called Kawachi in Solomon Islands in the Pacific, and it's one of those volcanoes which for most of its life is under the ocean, but when it when it erupts, it forms an island above the ocean. And it's just about to form an island, and here it is giving us an early warning that that's going to happen. Next slide, please, Anusha. So I'm going to talk about the great value of the technology of early warning systems, particularly for cyclones and tsunamis. There'll be a little bit about traditional wisdom, which, you know, is just as important and doesn't get as much airtime sometimes. So I'll talk a little bit about that. The extra kick, the climate change is giving cyclones and impacting on sea level rise. How we use this early warning systems to track cyclones and monitor any early warning signs for tsunamis, maximizing the use of them.
One of my students is trying to join. Oops.
Oh, yes. Should I start again? Stop, start?
Sorry, Mike. You can, you can start. Sorry, very sorry.
It's all right. Continue again then, if that's all right. And then we remember that with any, any community, a community is complex, and I've got one example of where not remembering that has fatal results. I'm going to talk about remote island states, and then we'll look at some lessons learned. Next one, please, Anusha. So the big thing for anything to do with meteorology, and I'm sure like me, many of you have seen enormous changes in meteorological science over, over the however long you've all been alive. I'm sure you've seen it develop so fast, and it's largely because of a number of things. Technological and the way they communicate. I think we can really learn from the meteorological community on many levels. But on the highly technical level, there's a whole lot of satellites up there measuring a whole lot of things specifically about the weather. And these are very powerful instruments. They then send all of this data to data and interpretation modeling centers who then can put their data through lots of powerful computers and do lots of scenarios. And they have really modernized and updated their comms. If you look back at the how meteorology was interpreted even 10 years ago or 20 years ago, it's a lot different now. They really think about their audiences. So we have a very powerful early warning system here, perhaps the most powerful in the world actually for the weather. Next, please. For tsunamis, we need, it's not quite as sophisticated, and as Nibedita rightly said, actually, it was the 2004 Indian Ocean Boxing Day tsunami that actually made people think we better get on to this a bit more than we have done previously. So the main thing about tsunamis, most of them are produced by earthquakes, not all, but most of them. And so we monitor earthquakes, and earthquakes we measure from seismometers. And what seismometers do is they measure the magnitude of the earthquake, the location of the earthquake at the surface of the earth, the depth of the earthquake, and also we can actually very quickly turn the data into the type, excuse me, the type of geological fault that's moved. And that's important because some faults produce tsunamis more than others. So if we can distinguish one from the other, it's very helpful. The, the map in the middle of the, of the slide here, all those stars are the main seismic centers around the world. So there's a worldwide network of these things going on. And there's a little link there that you can see on, just below the seismometer, to the USGS, who in real time will tell you about earthquakes. They've got a really good public system. Then on the ocean floor, we have actually, we have tsunami monitors. And we have things called dart boys, which are at the surface as well. And these feel for the specific wave types that tsunamis produce. In deep ocean, tsunamis travel at the speed of an airplane, actually a normal commercial airplane, about 800 kilometers an hour. And they have, they have very low amplitudes. You wouldn't even feel them if you were swimming in the ocean. So anyway, they've got a particular characteristic, so they can be detected. They can be detected early, and then they can be transmitted. And this often these days is through text, our mobiles on the text. Just last year here in New Zealand, this was all tested, their, their brand new dart system was tested. And I got a text message along with all my fellow people in New Zealand telling us that we're going to be hit by three tsunamis. And we were, but luckily for us, they're only about a centimeter or two high. Next one, please. So with this information, we can do this very powerful thing. So this, this is a Fukushima 2011 great East Japanese tsunami, which was produced by a very big, one of the biggest earthquakes we've ever seen. And it, it transmitted tsunamis right across the Pacific Ocean, and the dark colors there are linked to the energy of the tsunami. But you see, this provides an early warning system right across an ocean. If we'd had this for the Indian Ocean tsunami in time, we could have saved lives. For example, Sri Lanka was hit three hours after, after the earthquake, but they didn't get any early warning because there, there just wasn't anything in, well, there, there wasn't anything available at the time. So we could, this modeling was all done after the event. But now we can do it in real time and get messages out across the continents and across the oceans very quickly and hopefully give that valuable time to save lives. Next one, please. Cyclones are what I'm going to discuss a little bit about. These are incredible powerful mechanisms for transferring heat from the oceans. 90% of the surface heat of the earth gets caught up one way or the other eventually in the oceans. And when the conditions are right, the heat from the oceans gets transferred by convection into the cyclones. So you get this upward vortex of, of water vapor, which then collects in these big spiral clouds. And yeah, we, we get, we get the cyclones. Sorry, next one, please. Yeah, I'll finish with that one really anyway. I, I'm sure you all know about the shape. So the heat, the heat that the cyclones use is from, is from the ocean. And you can see here how the, how the heat is spread, distributed across the world's oceans. With the tropical waters being by far the, the warmest waters, they can reach up to 35 degrees C. The blue circle on the right of the slide there emphasizes the area I'm going to talk about, which is the Pacific Islands region, just to the north and east of Australia and north of New Zealand. So around Papua New Guinea, just north of Australia there, we get some of the hottest temperatures on earth. These are the source for the cyclones. Next one, please. And this is an absolutely amazing slide, that the white circle again is the Pacific Islands region. And these are real tracks of real cyclones, and this is the power of this early warning technique. Not only can it be used as an early warning system, it can be used as an analytical system, which allows us to get the message across different countries about which countries need to prepare for cyclones more than they might have otherwise considered. And gives us very precise geographical locations of cyclone tracks. And you can see that there's a gap between the northern hurricanes or cyclones, they call different names in different places. But let's not worry about that, the northern cyclones and the southern cyclones. And you can see the gap in the middle, that is where the tropics are. So the tropics produce the cyclones, but they don't get affected by the cyclones. Cyclones mainly affect those countries 20, between 10 and 20 degrees north and south of the equator. Although they can go considerably further north or south, as you can see from this slide. Next, please. And I just want to add something about climate change here, because of course, as we know with climate change, we get this added kick now, and it's actually, I don't want to go through this slide in too much detail, but it really, all it really says is it's simple physics. The warmer the air, the more water vapor can be held by the air. And I'm sure many of you have traveled from cold countries to humid tropical countries, and you will feel the difference on your skin. And it's purely because in the tropics, the, the warm air in the tropics can just hold that much more water. So the average global temperature at the moment is about 16 degrees C. That's the average world temperature. But of course, we know it's going to go up to 18 degrees C in the not-too-distant future. That extra two degrees means that our clouds on average can hold 13% more water. And that's what's happening, and that's why climate change is giving this extra kick to cyclones, to floods, to, to rain, rainfall in general. Next one, please. The other thing is along with the early warning, we should, we should, once, so the technology helps us with the early warning, but the other thing is getting your message right with that early warning message. And the good thing about cyclones is, is we can categorize them quite simply on their wind speeds from between one and five. And with climate change, we're seeing, we think we are seeing anywhere more of the magnitude four and five than we have done in the decades before. And in fact, some people are suggesting we might need a magnitude six now because the, the wind speeds are getting higher. As well as wind speeds, cyclones, because they produce a very low atmospheric pressure, they can physically lift up the ocean by up to 13 meters. And then when that, that hits landfall, they can produce this very dangerous storm surge. So information like that is missing from this magnitude, sort of simple magnitude, magnitude classification, but it's still very helpful. Next one, please. So I'm going to talk about two cyclones that I've been involved with in the Pacific. One was in Fiji in 2016. And this is called Cyclone Winston. And Winston actually had a, unusually for cyclones, had a very complex track. And it headed eastwards past, past Fiji. And Fiji breathed a sigh of relief, but then it came back unfortunately. And this was a category five cyclone with wind speeds, very high wind speeds, affected 40% of the 1 million population. We didn't have so many deaths, partly because of the early warning system and the communication systems. But a lot of the deaths were on the island of Coral, you can see circle there in blue. They did everything right. They got into a community house. They got high above the shoreline. But unfortunately, the storm surge got them because it was very high for this cyclone, and they were all drowned by a storm surge. Next one, please. The other one I just want to discuss briefly is, is the biggest cyclone we've had, I think, in the Pacific statistically, and I hit Vanuatu in 2015. It was called Tropical Cyclone Pam. There were relatively few deaths, 19. And that's because, again, of the early warning system, the good use of that, and the good communication of it. But 67% of the economy was in. But sixty seven percent of the economy was impacted. And this is what happens with these small island states, they can get very badly impacted. They also use their, the, the traditional wisdom for detecting uh, changes in the weather. They had local knowledge and local technologies for saving themselves as much as they can from these cyclones. And these things together were, are all used in the awareness campaigns. Next one, please. So now moving quickly to, um, low-lying islands in the Pacific. So we are getting sea level rise. It's going to be about eighty centimeters by the end of this century. And we're starting to see it rise in different places. And this, of course, is another added value from climate change to both, um, tsunamis and, and to cyclones. And I'm going to talk about Tonga Tapu. Next one, please. So in the Pacific, um, our, our, um, society, the, the Pacific community, the regional organization, worked with Geoscience Australia. And what we did was, we modeled what, um, tsunami wave would be like from the Tonga trench. You can see in that bottom diagram, you can see the, the trench in the ocean, that's called the Tonga trench. It gets very big earthquakes. They can produce large tsunamis. And you can see in the top right there, that model, the purples and the reds. This is telling us that Tonga Tapu, Nukalofa, the, the, the main town on Tonga Tapu would be drowned by fifteen, fifteen meters of water. And I had to deliver this message, actually, and the reasons behind it, to the Tonga Council one day. Uh, the Tonga government one day, sorry, and, and it wasn't a particularly pleasant conversation, but we had it. And the only thing we came up to save ourselves was, uh, something called a vertically scape structure, which is acting on the bottom left, which is like a raised football field or equivalent. Next slide, please. I'm now taking you to Solomon Islands and another, um, uh, another tsunami I worked on, um, in two thousand and seven. There was a magnitude eight earthquake which produced a big tsunami that killed about fifty five people in the different islands in Western Solomon's. Next one, please. But thirty three of the deaths out of the fifty five were on one little island called Gizo. And out of those thirty three deaths, thirty one were from a small migrant community who'd come originally from Kiribati. These are called the Gilbertese community, the host Melanesian community, um, which were the great majority of the seven thousand two hundred that lived on the island. Out of those, only two people died. So why was that? They had the same sorts of warnings and things like that. Next one, please. This is the last but one slide. So what they, what we, what we did is, we had a PhD looking at these different communities and why one community was affected far more than the other. And the reason was that the Gilbertese community, who's lived in, in islands, uh, previously, which don't get many tsunamis, didn't know the early warning signs. And these are not technological early warning signs. These are the early warning signs that people on the islands affected by tsunamis know. For example, the reef or the coastline around the islands can suddenly go dry. The, the, the water gets pulled out as the tsunami comes in. And those communities that are aware of this, they know that. And they know that is a sign to run very fast to higher ground. And they also had escape routes prepared. This is the Melanesian community, the other community. Um, whereas the Gilbertese didn't. So out of all the people that died, ninety seven percent were the small migrant community. Last, last slide, please. So these are just, uh, some final conclusions from this. So early warning systems are critical for saving lives, lives. We've, um, given examples, I think of that. Um, meteorological satellites are particularly important for cyclones, seismometers for tsunamis. Whatever the communication device, they must be communicated rapidly. And also, these, these, these communications should be trialed. You shouldn't wait until it's an actual disaster for this to happen. Text messages are very useful, but they're not, you, they're not universal. They don't capture anything. Use a range of, um, media. So prepare everybody as much as you can. Um, cyclones can have days of warning or hours of warning. Um, so, uh, they, they can at least give us significant amount of, of, of time. Tsunamis might, we might only have minutes, uh, uh, ahead. Those, um, examples I showed you in the Pacific, um, those islands were hit six to ten minutes after the earthquake. So the natural early warning signs are important as well. So let's not, let's not forget them, the ones that humans have always known about. Whether it's the weather or whether it's the behavior of the ocean or whatever. Knowledge sharing is essential. In that example I gave you of the communities, those communities were not particularly well-integrated. And this is true of many parts of the world, isn't it? So, uh, people who are involved in disaster management should be aware of this and do their best to make sure every bit of the community is informed. Global warming is giving that extra kick. And the final message is, I think we should get away from this, forget the one in a hundred years or thousand years or ten thousand years type of language for disasters. I think we just plan for the big one and we put everything, um, around that. Thank you very much for listening. That's the end of my talk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. It's absolutely fascinating. So what we will do today, so, um, instead of having the Q and A at the end, we are happy to uh, collect questions for Professor Mike Peterson now. So if you have any questions, this is your time. So we will wait for a few seconds for the questions to come. And you can also unmute yourself and ask, uh, the question directly to Professor Peterson.
All right. So for the depth, there's one on the depth of the quakes there.
Yeah.
Um, so dangerous earthquakes are shallow earthquakes and big earthquakes generally, wherever they are, whether they're on the land or under the ocean. So the ocean in general is about four kilometers deep with seawater. For example, if that boxing, the boxing day one that, um, Nibediter and I have both talked about. The actual earthquake for that was off of Sumatra and it was in the sea depth of four kilometers, but the actual depth of the earthquake itself was only, um, a few kilometers under the ground. And that is, that is very shallow for earthquakes. And it was the right type of, um, fault. So if you get faults that, um, that push upwards into the ocean, they displace the water and they produce this tsunami. So wherever it is, whether, whether it's on the land or in the ocean, we're looking for shallow, um, um, shallow earthquakes slightly beneath, beneath the surface.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mike. We have another question. It's not a question exactly, it's a request. And the request is, can we have? Can we get the PowerPoint slides from Professor Mike Peterson's talk?
Sure, yeah, yes. I've shared them with, um,
With us.
Uh, with you. So yeah, please sh- share them, yes.
That's fine. So we will do that. So, Miss Rami, we will send you.
Yeah, uh, I have a small question. Um, I'm Dr. Madhulika, um, editing manager of, uh, ADN. So I really liked the, uh, presentation and giving us a, uh, overview on how, like on tsunami, on cyclone. I wanted to know, uh, because I'm based in Orissa, we face so many calamities, like, you know, hailstorm, lightning. Is it like, can we predict the lightning hailstorm as well?
Hmm, that's a good one. Well, um, again, yes, becau- because light, lightning comes from, um, very active convection, convection in the atmosphere, you know, where you're getting very active convection, where you're getting big tropical clouds and where you're getting big systems. This is where you, when you tend to get the lightning. Um, and also the lightning discharge is, you can even pick them up on seismometers, you know. Um, but actually, they're, they're happening by the time that occurs. But at least you can get the very start of the lightning storm. Um, and I think from what I understand, um, in your part of the world, Nibediter is told, actually, uh, Nibediter surprised me that how many people die from lightning strikes in your part of the world. And I guess most of it's livelihood-based, isn't it? It's people out in the rice fields or, or whatever, with no, um, higher ground around. So there is, you know, more than, more than, um, early warning, what would be good is to get a whole bunch of telegraph poles or something put up in the fields if, if, if that is possible. I know, of course, that's, uh, not, not so easy in the real world and many parts of the world. But it's, it's, it's lightning conductors that, that can, that can, um, uh, take away the danger, the risk and the danger. But going back to your point, it's, it's knowledge about the weather systems and they are, they are getting so much better. And the Indian Met, Met service is very good. And, you know, I mean, you guys are sending satellites to Mars now, you know. So you've, you've got all the technology. It's about getting that technology used for the ordinary people in, in Orissa or, or Disha or wherever.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
There is, there are a couple of questions. So number one, uh, is from Tom. So Tom's question is, in your experience, yeah, go on.
Uh, what kinds of community initiatives happen in these cities which marry technical warnings, which life-saving actions, and what steps would you take? Um, it's actually a complex question, that, that one. It's a really good question, but it's a very complex one. I, but if, if I give it in a nutshell, it depends which part of the Pacific, um, you know, I, I don't know if you know, but one third of all the world spoken languages are in the Pacific countries. Polynesia, they have one language, but Melanesia, that, which is ninety odd percent of the Pacific, they have, oh, thousands of languages. So that's one issue is, is, is the languages actually is one thing. The, the second thing is, um, some tech, some technical areas, um, are available, others aren't. Seismometers, for example, are not available locally. Tsunami warning systems are just the generic ones that we can grab from the rest of the world. And same with the meteorology, it's just the meteorology, just because of the nature of the atmosphere, it's global and we can use it. So what we do is, um, uh, the, the, the regional bodies and the national bodies all have disaster management offices. And they're quite well-connected in the Pacific. And they have many workshops and many learning sessions. And they work with communities. So we try to appoint community people who have an interest in this area. And we'll act, we'll act as community liaison officers, contact officers. And then we also try to, you know, emphasize the, um, traditional wisdom and the traditional knowledge. This has kept these people alive in very fragile environments for thousands of years. And we should not, you know, of course, that should be highlighted every bit as much as the technology. I hope that sort of answers that one. Uh, slides, uh, any, yeah, document.
So there is another question, Mike, for you, something similar somewhat. It says that are there any efforts in place to document and incorporate local knowledge into early warning structures from Nelson?
Thank you, Nelson. And I think you probably know the answer here, don't you? We're, we're in, um, we're in a westernized world, aren't we? Where the value of, uh, the value of knowledge is not given equal status. This is the barrier. This is the main barrier. And it's the, 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 really, the southern voice has got to get louder and got to speak these things and got to get, got to get the status of this, these different knowledge domains at the same par. But there are some things, actually, um, uh, if you, if you write to me, I'll, um, uh, I'll, I'll do my best to dig some things out. But there are some things about, I worked at, just to give you an example, I've worked on a volcano before. Um, and I use the, uh, um, traditional stories, the oral history stories, work with the community and, and their oral histories to help document the, um, the disaster potential of the volcano. And that's just one example. Many people in the volcano failed pretty good in this area, actually, at working with the local knowledge and things. But we've still got a long way to go to equalize the knowledge domains.
Thank you very much, Mike. I think we don't have any question, any, I haven't received anymore. But just a quick one, Mike, from my side. So from your experience, what do you think the, what, what is the level of receptivity on the part of world meteorological organization to integrate the natural science, you know, the natural science of early warnings, as you mentioned, from your experience in different islands of the Pacific and also the indigenous knowledge?
Yeah, it's a, again, very good question. On the meteorological side, um, I have speaking from someone living in the islands and working with islanders, and, you know, we, we were on the law technology side of things. Well, relatively low technology in terms of, you know, Western technology type stuff, but we still had some stuff. Um, we found them incredibly helpful and leaning over backwards to work with us, actually, the meteorological offices. Uh, and the provision of data was, was, was fantastic. We even got, um, private companies, uh, with, uh, you know, satellites up there to share data to help us with post-disaster recovery and things like that. So, um, and, uh, we found that with a meteorological company, there's a whole range of people, from people who are highly technical. You know, you need those people for the modeling and, and turning the data into images and all of that. But they're not always the best people to communicate that, you know, with, 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 with the, the other types of community. But they've also got other people within the meteorological community who are, who are trained in that, who are better at that, and at least are reaching halfway. So we tended to work with both of those and, um, I think a combination of that. But I'm very impressed with their community compared to some other science communities, if I'm honest with you. I think they've come a long, long way. And of course, they can do a lot more, but, um, oh, we can all do a lot more, but they're trying at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So before you go, I would just like to invite Professor Nuryok Adasan. He is our, another advisor. And I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to both of you. And Professor Adasan, before Professor Mike Peterson leaves, would you like to give us a remark? A very brief remark, because it's a brilliant opportunity, because we haven't had two advisors on board and living in different planets and time, the differences of time zones and various other things. We haven't had this opportunity. So I'm so thankful that Professor Nuryok Adasan has joined us to listen to you, Professor Mike Peterson. So it's, I would like to take this opportunity. So Professor, can I move to you? Yeah, we can.
Okay. Yeah. There was a very informative, uh, yeah, presentation. And lots of things, uh, we, we have to learn more from you. Couple of points, uh, I'd just like to bring up. One is, uh, education, disaster education, I think. Uh, one way is school education. Are there any efforts being made to, or for open what you have learned from the last, yeah, latest tsunami issues, which made a lot of difference between some community and other communities? So school education and disaster education, uh, in terms of, uh, early warning alert and also evacuation issues. And another is, uh, how you do you work also with, uh, media, local media. And in Japan, I want to say, uh, National Broadcasting Station, NHK has been in a way very much sort of say engaged with, uh, uh, learning about how, how to evacuate. And they are also taking a very important role. And, uh, some professors from, uh, DPRI, where I worked, are also very much sort of doing their effort to get some media people be aware and also knowledgeable of, uh, uh, the mechanism, but also how, how, how to evacuate in those countries. So media's role might also be very interesting. Uh, yeah, but anyway, thank you very much. And if we have any very short comments, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Adasan. Um, excellent questions. Um, and of course, you come from one of the best countries, if not the best country, for these sorts of things. And, uh, I think we all learn from Japan. Um, I learned a lot, for example, from the Kobe earthquake incident and how Japan responded to that, and Fukushima too, of course. And I live in New Zealand and, and New Zealand is, uh, you know, for a relatively small country compared to Japan is absolutely amazing on, on many levels of, uh, of this sort of area, the sorts of areas you're talking about. But of course, both countries are technologically oriented. You know, level of education is high and it's, uh, we are in rich OECD countries. So when we go to the, uh, less, less well-resourced country, shall we say, um, the challenges are different. And, um, so in places like these small Pacific islands, which Japan helps a lot too, actually works with a lot. I also work with Japan, by the way, as one of the many governments who were, who helped us in, in the Pacific Islands. Um, the education, um, is coming, um, is coming on a long, a long way because, you know, cyclones hit the islands. Oh, they're fairly regular, even before we, you know, talked about climate change and all that stuff. Cyclones are pretty common in the Pacific. So that, that level of, um, of, uh, as you will know, I'm sure. If you have fairly frequent big magnitude events, then the community is open to learning. They want to learn. So the communities, uh, they very much are, are open to that. They're very much open, they, they, they demand it, in fact. Even in, you know, these small, relatively poor, um, island states, they're quite vocal. You know, leadership in these countries is not, not very far away from the communities. So the leaders and the politicians can't hide. And they give, they, they're given quite high priority. So the local universities and even the schools and the village schools even, they do sessions related to um, disaster and risk management, disaster and risk awareness, and all these sorts of things. They do drills. Um, and the, the general level of literacy and awareness is pretty good. And that is why those two very big cyclone events I, I discussed, they actually led to relatively small casualties, deaths at least anyway. There, there was a lot of damage with houses and things like that. But, you know, they know what to do and, and also the oral history tradition is strong. So for example, in one community, I went in Fiji afterwards, they knew the caves that someone from the ninety, uh, cyclone in the nineteen fifties used to go to, to save the village. And they use that knowledge. In Vanuatu, they build, uh, um, houses out of bush materials, which are aerodynamic and very strong and can just move in the cyclone. Whereas the modern houses, so-called modern houses, they tend to fall down and get blown over. So there, there, there's a lot of residual knowledge. Of course, the younger generation can get detached from this. Because we have pushed, um, you know, a Western model of education on them. And they've been decoupled from their traditional roots. So we have to remind them of the importance and the status of their traditional knowledge in their own country with their own people. And that's quite interesting. And, uh, yeah, very enjoyable to do that too. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I quite agree with you. Local knowledge kind of thing is also very important. So that's the area we can learn a lot also from. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So thank you, Professor Mike Peterson. Thank you, Professor Khadasan. So with that note, we'll have to close Professor Mike Peterson's session. I would like to invite, uh, Hitoki to introduce our second speaker. So thank you once again for these brilliant questions. There are still more questions, Mike, for you, but we will email that to you and we will solicit the answers and we will post it on our website and also email our participants. So thank you very much, Mike, once again. Hitoki, over to you.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much, Nimerita. Yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, Michael, it's all your great presentation. Actually, I'm doing disaster education. So it was very interesting to me as well. Okay. So let me introduce, uh, next speaker. So next speaker is Mr. Sheikh Kailal Rahaman. So, uh, Mr. Sheikh Kailal Rahaman is a seasoned humanitarian actor with around fourteen years of professional experience. Kailal has a long track record of working in climate change adaptation, resilience, reading, multi-sector humanitarian response and forecast-based financial program in, in India, Nepal, Bangladesh, Myanmar, Sri Lanka and Thailand. She is experienced in working with government and other stakeholders and designing humanitarian policy frameworks at the national and state level. Currently, he is working on anticipatory action aimed at anticipating the disaster and supporting the community with our reaction to reduce the loss of lives and livelihood of the vulnerable population. So today's title is saving lives and livelihood through early warning, early action. So thank you very much. So the pleasure, you are, over to you.
Thank you so much for the wonderful introduction. Thanks a lot. And it's really great to be here today with this wonderful community of practitioners and share our experiences of working in anticipation. As you know, Bangladesh is one of the country that is highly vulnerable and also impacted by the climate change as well as couple of hazards they visit very frequently, the country, for example, the flood, uh, cyclone along with other, other hazards also. So let me share, uh, the experiences, uh, that we have implementing the early warning, early action in the country. And I'll try to share, uh, our experiences from the ground. Very practical and maybe a little bit linking, uh, with my previous speaker, the technical knowledge on the forecasting and the with my presenters also. Maybe next slide please. So very quickly on the anticipatory action, uh, as my previous speaker here is also saying that science, technology, they are improving. And today we are in a better position to anticipate, uh, the disaster that might occur. Um, in a study, it was found that around fourteen, uh, fifty percent of the disaster, they, they could be foresee. And twenty percent of the disaster, they are really, really very well with anticipate them. And if we can anticipate, it's not really good. We wait for the disaster to happen. Uh, cause dates and, and, and damages to the assets of the most vulnerable communities. It's not really good. So that's why, uh, it's really smart way to support the community before the disaster happens. Uh, so that they can take measures, they can take early actions to mitigate the impacts of the disaster that might cause, um, while the disaster is hitting them. So that's what in a, in a nutshell, the anticipatory action or early action, uh, is about. Uh, next slide please. So as I mentioned that, uh, uh, from the side of the Charmed Cross and Bangladesh Red Christian Society with support from our, uh, IFRC umbrella, we are implementing, uh, anticipatory action, particularly for three hazards. Those are floods, cyclone and heat waves. Today I'll try to focus more on floods, but if you have any question for cyclone as well as heat waves, I'm here to answer them also. Uh, click once please. Uh, this is the model, how it works, the flood anticipatory action. So we have two levels of forecasts. One is the blow first, which is a global one. And it gives us a little bit more lead time. Lead time means, uh, the forecast and the actual event. Between these two events, the time difference is the, uh, is the lead time. And for blow first, we get fifteen days of lead time. And during these fifteen, uh, fifteen days, what we do, we implement the preparatory actions. For example, we train our volunteers, we send them, uh, to the field, collect beneficiary data, finalize the beneficiary data, uh, list and also coordinate with different agencies. And we are really ready if there is another forecast from the flood warning and, uh, flood forecasting and warning center, uh, which is a national level forecaster, comments forecaster. If we get our forecast from them, we are ready to implement the early actions for that. And the trigger point for us, it's not really for every flood event will implement our early action. It's for the extreme events. So what is that? The danger level, which is the government defined danger level for different points of the river. And then we added another point eight five meters with that. Why that? Because the danger level is defined based on the, on the height of the agricultural land. And at that point of time, the water does not really enter into the community. And the point eight five meter is actually that. That is the point when the water also enter in the community and start damaging the houses also. So that's why the point eight five meter and it should remain for three days. So that's what our trigger point is, we activate. Or maybe if we don't really have that technical, that scientific forecast and analysis, if our analysis says that the household assets will be damaged at least twenty five percent or out of the total area, total population, at least forty percent of population is going to be impacted. That is when also we can, uh, activate our early action protocol and implement the early action. So kind of like we, we also have the alternate options to activate them. Uh, click once please. And these are the actions or early actions that we implement once the anticipatory action protocol is activated. And we get five days of lead time. During those five days, we implement all these early actions. What do you do? First and the most important thing we do is disseminate the early warning, the flood, its intensity, severity, how long it will be there, what are the damages that might cause? And then also amends generations, what the people can do to protect themselves and also reduce the impact of the, of the flood. Evacuation support is one of the key early actions that we implement. And for evacuation, not only, not only people, we also evacuate their livelihood assets, for example, the livestock. And also the household movable assets and sometimes even the house also. If it's, uh, the people have kind of like the CGI teensy on the roof, they can take it, uh, off and then put it on the board and we evacuate that, uh, to the, to the safe shelter. So that later on, while the water is, uh, not there, they can come back and very quickly, uh, establish or set up their house, uh, house again. First aid during the evacuation as well as at the safe shelter that is provided by our trained volunteers. And then we also support at the safe shelter, provide different types of, uh, support that could be in terms of the war facilities, that could be, uh, the COVID nineteen measures, those kinds of support are also provided. The most important part, I think, and the most interesting also, uh, part of the early action is the multipurpose cash grant. That is given not to all, but to the most vulnerable people, most vulnerable households, uh, that is given. Uh, next slide please. So what I'll try to share is one story maybe, uh, on the, particularly on the cash grant that was given to Mr. Ali. So Mr. Ali, he lives in one of the, um, Chor Island, we call, which is inside the river. So he lives there and every, almost every year he faces, he witnessed the flood, uh, in Jomura River basin. And the, the house is completely destroyed. And he was sharing, uh, earlier this year, while we were talking to him, he was sharing that at least eight times he has to shift his house to a different location in past ten years because that was damaged, the erosion happened, so all those causes. And once the flood happens during the flood as well as, uh, in the aftermath of the flood, uh, he can't really get any employment. Uh, he's a daily laborer particularly. So there is no job, no money. He has to take loans with high interest from the local money lenders. And they are not really very formal. Uh, they, they, uh, the interest rate is very, very high, uh, most of the times. So in twenty twenty, while there was really huge flood and reached our threshold that I was mentioning in the previous slide, it, it reached there and, and we activated our early action protocol. And Mr. Ali was one of the, uh, beneficiary under the multipurpose cash grant. What he did with the four thousand five hundred Bangladesh itaka that we, uh, supported him, he bought food for the immediate need of the family with a portion of the money. And with rest of the money, what he did, he bought, uh, fishing net. And he started in partnership with another person of his community, he started fishing in the river. And earlier this year, I mean, in twenty twenty, we supported him and this is twenty twenty-two. Earlier this year, we visited him and was talking to him. He was so happy. Particularly, he said that he has now a steady income. It's a stable income that he gets from the, from the fishing net. And it's around five hundred B D Taka, uh, per day. And he was able to continue, uh, the education of his son. He just passed, uh, the higher secondary education this year. And he recently raised the, the plinth or the floor of his, uh, house so that water can't really very easily or the every year it can't enter into the house and destroy it. So these are the kind of like very quick snapshots that we got from this story. And I'm very happy to say it's not only the early action that, that, uh, that helps them to reduce the immediate impact, but also it contributes to the greater resilience, the long-term impact, the long, long-term resilience of the households. And there is a story, we had a publicist on this, uh, uh, there is a link also on this slide. This will be shared later on with you. Please, if you are, uh, willing to read more, definitely you are welcome. Next slide please. And of course, earlier this year, again, we had a study. We were not really going only to see the impacts through the cases stories, but also, uh, overall study that can really give us a picture, uh, how the early actions are really working, how they are helping the community, the households, the most, most vulnerable people to take early actions and, uh, prevent, uh, or mitigate or reduce the impacts of the flood. This is one of the, uh, one of the impact that we identified, the early warning particularly. They are so effective that it increased the, the rate of evacuation of the people. And just let me give you one brief snapshot, maybe the people that came to evacuate their, the female folks as well as the children first and the adult members, the male adult members particularly, they remain there. Uh, and they don't really very easily agree to get evacuated because they, that, that, all the assets are there. But because of this early warning and we were able to, uh, we were able to share the level of flooding and the impacts that might cause and they, they, they were really, uh, very keen to get evacuated. And this was fourteen percent more than the comparison group that we were studying. Next slide please. In terms of successfully mitigating the damages and losses, uh, twenty-one percent more people in the, in the supported group, they were able to protect their working equipments. That could be different tools, that could be fishing, uh, equipments, that could be, uh, farm sets. And they were able to protect better their, uh, livestock. And definitely that's why there was, uh, less, uh, damages or less loss. That was thirteen percent around, as well as in terms of their poultry, less, ten percent less, uh, deaths or loss was there in the, in the supported group. They were also in better position to take negative coping mechanism. I'm sure you are aware of this terminology. So they didn't, uh, the supported group, they didn't really have to borrow money. And this, this was twelve percent less in the supported group than the, than the completion group who didn't receive any support from our intervention. And twelve percent less people, less household, they had to sell their household assets to deal with the impact of the flood after, at the aftermath of the, of the floods. So these are the kind of like the few negative coping mechanism that was less in the supported groups. Uh, next please. This is the last slide, uh, that I have. In terms of health and well-being, uh, the supported group, they had better health status and less illness as well as in terms of like, uh, uh, personal feeling or psychological feeling, they were in better positions. So I'll stop here. Once again, this study is also published on the anticipation hub website. If you, uh, wish to read more, please, uh, go through that website. You will find the report also. Uh, thank you so much for listening me.
Thank you, Cora. That's fantastic. So if there are any questions, we're happy to take it now. Right. So we have a question here. Cora, for you, one minute. Okay. So two questions. What is the percentage of funding for forecast and analysis? Do the forecast and analysis happen by a department with this role or by people with various roles, including this one? And the second question is, you described some early actions. What about the impact of what we call a disaster economy? How do you ensure that this is not coming as a secondary impact on the societies to which we respond?
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much. In terms of the forecast, so I mean, very, uh, we should be aware that we are not the forecaster. So what do we do? We use the forecast from different agencies and we tend to use two forecast. One global and for actual action protocol, we use the government forecast for flood, which is, uh, the flood forecast. And yeah, so that is one. And the second part, we analyze the forecast and we have and that is kind of like, we use the, yes, we have Excel based, we put all the information there, not only the forecast, but also the, the socio-economic data that we have from the secondary sources for all the unions, for the smallest part of the, of the administrative boundaries. Uh, we collect those data, analyze them, and finally we produce the maps, which shows us which are the pockets of the community that is going to be most impacted, uh, with all those data and where we should implement our early action. So that's how the analysis happened. I hope I was able to answer the first part of the question. In terms of the second part, I didn't really get it. Uh, do you mean the, uh, because of the cash transfer, there might be negative impacts also, or if you can really unmute and help me out?
Yes. So I, I was actually asking about the disaster economy that we might cause by, um, actually deploying people or organization deployed in particular, you know, locations. Um, providing not the costs, but, or providing, you know, even salaries that might be, um, not exactly what should be in a particular society. I think we have seen that in many responses that, uh, we, we have done as humanitarian community.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I think, uh, for us, it's a little bit different. So as you know, all the red cross that present, we have existing structure at the lowest level, up to the lowest levels. For, for Bangladesh, we have up to the district level, we have the district branches. And with branches, we have volunteers. So they are there and we engage the volunteers to do all these work. So that is one part. In terms of, uh, the distribution of cash and other support that we give. And those are definitely, I mean, I'm really happy to say that this is very small to contribute to build the to contribute to build the resilience of the household as well as. One study shows that once a family is hit by the flood in this Jamuna River basin area, it takes two-point-five years for that family to come back to their previous position or the previous status that they had. But again, before that two-point-five years, they get hit by another flood. So they, they fall actually within this cycle of getting impacted by the disaster, by the floods, and they are not really able to get out. Why I was sharing the story of Ali was because of that. We were, really, I mean, it's not hundred percent, but we were really able to contribute a little bit to help him get out of that cycle. So that's how we also feel. It's not only supporting them or getting kind of like the disaster economy or negative impact of that. We had a couple of studies we did before interventions. The market studies as well as the community-level studies and what are the early actions that we should implement. So yeah, those are my comments, but definitely at times there will be, it's not really hundred percent, we can't really ensure that those are not happening.
Thank you very much, Montez, for that question. Is there any more? Happens, oh, okay, so we have one. Using cash, so okay, using cash as an incentive for evacuation. How practically is that for low-income countries where resources are already strained?
Yeah, thank you so much. So I mean, this is really wonderful question. You are trying to link the evacuation with the early warning and the cash. So for us, what do we do? Exactly in that way, we try to influence other action with another one. So with the early warning, what we try to motivate the community to get evacuated as early as they can. And we support those communities with the boat evacuation because they are staying in the, in the Chor Islands, which might be inside the, inside the river or maybe outside the protected area of the impactment. And the boat evacuation support is provided by us, but not really with the cash that we provide them. The cash is really unconditional and multipurpose. And it is for the family, for the household itself, to decide for what purpose they want to use that cash. But we try to motivate them to use the cash before the disaster hits, before the flood hits them. And that could be, they buy food for them, that could be, they vaccinate their cattle. It's up to them to decide. So that's how we try to link, but you are very much right. We try to influence one activity through another one.
Thank you very much, Kaural. Kaural, I have a couple of questions. So number one, I really liked this innovative project or the intervention that Red Cross is doing. It is actually designed to help the poor and the vulnerable. And I think this is the uniqueness of your early warning and early action of Red Cross. So, and also, this is also very innovative because it is not a relief. It's not after the disaster, it is before as an anticipatory action so that the poor households are getting ready mentally, psychologically, as well as financially. So I think this is really, really innovative, and I hope you guys are trying to replicate in different parts of the world. So two questions. So number one is that what has been the sampled population for impact of cash in flood projects in Bangladesh? I didn't get that population. We got the percentage of the beneficiaries. But what is the population that is under consideration for this intervention? So that we get to know the scale and the impact. Because sometimes percentages can mask the numbers. And the second is, so when you were giving this money to, for example, to Mr. Ali, I think that was a very powerful story, a very, very powerful story about the poverty ratchets and the vulnerability ratchets and how a small little injection of fund helped this Mr. Ali. So is this a one-off grant? Is this a loan? Or what is it that Red Cross is giving to these vulnerable people, especially in the Chor or the island places?
Sure, thank you so much. So in terms of the first part of the question, so as I mentioned, we have three hazards that we are working. And for three different hazards, we have three early action protocols where we define all these. Kind of like what are the pre-agreed early actions? How many number of people we want to reach or we will reach once activated through all those different types of actions? For example, for, for early warning, we have different numbers. For cash, we have different numbers. For the flood, early action protocol, particularly, we have three thousand three hundred households that we will reach through cash transfer, multipurpose cash transfer. But not only this, we are also trying to partner with other actors. So this number I mentioned is from the funding from the I F R C. So we have one special funding mechanism, disaster relief, sorry, disaster response emergency fund. And under that fund, we have one window which is for anticipatory action particularly. Once the country like Bangladesh, we activate our early action protocol, automatically the agreed amount, they transfer to Bangladesh Red Christian Society to implement all these actions. So pre-agreed financing mechanism. So with that, with that funding, we support three thousand three hundred households for flood. We also partnered with the World Food Program. And under their funding also, we are able to cover additional six thousand two hundred households. It's not ending yet. So what we have, the UN mechanism and the movement mechanism, Red Cross Red Christian Movement Mechanism, we are working so very well, so coordinated way that throughout this monsoon season, every fifteen days, we have meetings. And there, we try to get other peoples, also other agencies, maybe UN agencies, INOs, we try to get them and get their plans also. And in that coordinated way, while we have all the plans from all the agencies, we try to also segregate where, who will work, where, with what support. So we have that maps. And that's how we try to reach out to the most vulnerable people as well as cover as many people as we can and try to avoid the duplication also. And the cash grant that we provide, it's one of cash. And as I mentioned earlier also, it's multipurpose. And it's not really any conditional. We don't really put any condition. It's up to the family, whatever reason they want to use the cash, they are free to do that. So it's one-on.
There is one related question from Montez. I think this is more to do with the sample selection. I mean, so Montez says that for the multipurpose cash, do you choose the receiver of a household based on analysis of dynamics and use, and usage of the cash? For example, in Yemen, injures give cash to women of a household. So do you have any such, whatever selection criteria as to which member of the household receives this one-off cash?
Yeah, thank you so much. For anticipatory action, we have two layers of mechanism to select the final beneficiary. First of all, I was mentioning that we get the forecast. And along with that, we also overlay the socioeconomic information that we already have with us in an Excel sheet. And we have formulas, simple tool, we have formulas to calculate. Okay, this is the forecast, and these are the socioeconomic information. At the end, we calculate the final, kind of like ranking. And that is when we select the geographical location here to reach the final conclusion for the households. Then on those pockets which are supposed to be impacted most, we send our volunteers to collect data. And as you rightly mentioned, we have the criteria. That could be the female-headed household, the elderly, people with disability, and then children also. With all those, we have other criteria, and we put weights for each of those criteria. So it's not only the volunteers collecting the data and we are finalizing, but with all those households, we put those weights. And finally, we select the beneficiary or the households for our cash grant. So that's how, in nutshell, how it works.
Thank you very much, Kaural. So there is one opportunity, someone has forwarded a scope for collaboration with you, a PhD student from Uganda, Quesiga. He really enjoyed your presentation. He's writing his PhD on early warning and would like to partner with you. So if there is anything that you want to tell him now in terms of sharing your email ID or anything, please, please assure him. From your side, thank you.
Very quickly, maybe. So there might be two opportunities to, to work with us or to support the work that you want to do. One, directly with the Bangladesh Red Christian Society or maybe through German Red Cross. So if you want to come through German Red Cross, I, I can give you a couple of contacts. You can reach out to our headquarter colleagues because they are the ones they can facilitate. We are not allowed to do such kinds of collaborations. I'm sorry for that, but yeah, but definitely I can facilitate that to link you with our headquarter colleagues who are based in Bahrain. And as well as if you want to work directly with the Bangladesh Red Christian Society, I can also link you with our national colleagues. So yeah, very briefly, that is possible.
Thank you very much. I hope Mr. Milton, you got the answer that you were looking for. Now, I think we are conscious of the time that, you know, we have overrun by twenty-two minutes. And it's partly because the discussions have been so lively, the questions were so animated and informative for Professor Mike Peterson and also for Kaural. So I think we will have to wrap this up. But before we do, I would like to invite two of our organizational partners, and one is Professor Noriokada, our advisor. And also, we've got another person online today, Professor Aloy Harshmugul. So Professor Noriokada-san, if you have any remarks, any comments, any questions for Kaural, please feel free to come forward. And also, Aloy, please feel free to ask questions. We would like to hear from you. Thank you. Aloy, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you. Just before I have to leave. No, I think it was very interesting to see this kind of early warning systems and what is going on in the development. I think it's, it's very necessary, and as you heard in one of the speeches, it is very necessary to train the people to, so that they learn and know how to behave and what to do. And we saw those many people with staid on the island because they didn't know how to behave or what to do after the sex. So I think most important is this kind of knowledge transfer to those people who are not from the region, for instance, who were not there before, didn't know how to do that. And I saw that in different places during emergencies. So yeah, thanks a lot. Unfortunately, I have to leave soon, so no further question from my side. Thanks a lot, really interesting.
Thank you very much, Aloy. Professor Noriokada is probably left. That's okay, it was lovely to hear from you, Aloy. So I think with this note, I just want to thank Kaural once again. Thank you so much for giving us your talk. And yeah, this is the end of our session. So I would like to invite Dr. Madhulika Sahel, based in India, to conclude this session. So over to you, Madhul.
Thank you, Nibitha. It's a pleasure for me to thanks the Professor Michael Peterson, the first speaker, and Mr. Sekharol Rahman for a very interesting talk on a very special session on International Day for Disaster Risk Reduction, Early Warning and Early Action for All. Definitely, you know, the first part of the talk talked about the early warning. And the second part of the session highlighted the action that, you know, every country should take at the time of disaster. And I'm sure Rahman, Mr. Rahman talk highlighting on different model, especially on cash transfer and, you know, on the early action that one should take. And in fact, in Orissa also, they do take their evacuated people and they, you know, keep the people on, on a safer place and they try to make them psychologically prepared to face the disaster. So that's a really very interesting, and I'm sure the audience today have taken a lot from this session. I really thank the speakers today who have given us more insight and how every country should be working towards the reduction and the early action that should be taken. I thanks the audience and I thanks the ADN team members for putting each and every effort to make the special session run smoothly. And this is not the first time we are conducting the special session as Nibitha has already, you know, have, you know, have shared, like we have been conducting a lot of special session. And this is a really, really very special session. I thank you all for joining us today and, and making this session really special one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madhul, and I hope the ADN members will continue to follow us. So our next special session is going to take place in Uganda for the Gorilla Conference in Makarari, most likely between seventh and tenth December. And we hope to see you there. And we will announce the details of the conference from next month on.
Yes, and there is another session with our Pakistan team on seventeenth of October. We actually planned to do something on thirteenth, but seventeenth was a feasible time for ADN member to collaborate with the Pakistan, you know, collaborators. And that is, please join us for the, another interesting session. It will be run in hybrid mode. Those who are in Pakistan can always attend in person, and those who are there online can always attend online as well. So thank you so much, and we look forward to see you again in our special sessions.
Goodbye.
Thank you, thank you so much. Bye-bye.